I just saw Bob.
Was he here?
Yeah, he's just coming in. Cindy Toll?
Here.
Nikki Gates?
Here.
Derek Metzen?
Here.
Jeremy McLaughlin?
Here.
And it looks like Bob Seaworth will be entering momentarily.
Just said here.
And Christina Robertson Gardnerstaff.
All right. Where's the thingamajig? There. Okay. We're gonna wait a second. Hey, Bob.
Hi.
We're gonna call you for a roll. Can you just say here?
I'm here.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so our first item for the work session is a presentation by Brian Vaughn and NBSP, Metro Senior Cut-off Natural or Natural Resource Science writing and NBSP update on work being performed at the Kenema Bluff's open space area. Oh, ours is cut off a little bit. So, we'll give you 15 minutes. You don't have to take it.
Brian Vaughn, Natural Resource Scientist at Metro and...
Jonathan Saul, Science and Stewardship Division Manager at Metro.
We came today to give a little update to the Historic Review Board about what's happening at Metro, what's happening at Kenema and the work that we're doing. Just to give folks a little bit of orientation and introduction, through the 1995 and 2006 voter-approved natural area bond measures, Metro has acquired roughly 13,000 acres across the metropolitan region to protect water quality and wildlife habitat. At Kenema, we've so far protected 271 acres, and that's both in Metro and city ownership. The first acquisition at Kenema was in 1996, and I think it was roughly 22 or 24 acres. The Kenema Neighborhood Children's Park serves as the gateway to the natural area. At the site, there's a diverse history that dates back to prehistoric times with the Missoula floods and encampments of Native Americans. Just showing you guys a map of the Kenema site. So, in orange is the 2006 bond acquisitions, and then in blue are the '95 bond acquisitions. Also on the map, we have in darker green, the city ownership. So, there's the Kenema Neighborhood Children's Park and a city natural area. In red, the outline of red outlines the area of which we did some site planning for in 2011. This was the Kenema Bluff Natural Resource Conservation and Site Management Plan. The plan was developed to protect and enhance the unique characteristics of the site while allowing compatible public access. This was a five-year plan that described conservation targets and recreation and access goals. We'll talk a little bit about each of those two components in the talk tonight. With this planning process, we held three community meetings and had input from the neighbors and local stakeholders, some of the local stakeholders being the city, the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, and the Grand Ron Tribe. The plan was completed last September of 2011 and covers roughly 120 acres was the area that we, was the area that I showed in red outline on the map. One of the main components is the conservation targets of the site. I'm gonna let Jonathan talk about that.
Thanks, Brian. Several years ago, the state of Oregon published the Oregon Conservation Strategy, which was a statewide effort mandated by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service for states interested in continuing to receive federal support, that identified priority habitats and species that should be the focus of conservation efforts across the state. And they worked in different regions. One of the regions is the Willamette Valley. And the purpose of the plan was not to mandate specific actions that specific organizations or entities should take, but to create a guiding framework that identified those habitats and those species that were most at risk of being lost without conservation action. The Kenema site, as it turns out, has several habitat types and species that were identified in the state conservation strategy as the highest priority for protection and enhancement in the Willamette Valley. That includes Willamette Valley wet prairie and upland prairie, which is essentially a grass and flowering plant-dominated habitat, few or no trees, and Oregon white oak savanna and woodland mix, which are kind of, you could think of it as prairie, but with Oregon white oak growing on it. And these two habitats are among the most endangered habitats actually in North America, let alone Oregon. There are almost no large examples left of native upland prairie and few of native wet prairie. And we've lost about 90% of the Oregon white oak habitats to a combination of conversion to agriculture, conversion for residential use, and the gradual, them gradually being swallowed up by Douglas fir and Oregon ash that overtake them in the absence of fire or other management actions. Last but not least, we have a state-endangered plant that grows at Kenema called the White Rock Larkspur, beautiful white delphinium that grows in reasonable abundance there and also is identified in the state conservation strategy and the federal Fish and Wildlife Service's recovery plan for rare Willamette Valley species as an important species of concern. Kenema turns out to be one of the best locations in the metro area to protect these habitats and this particular rare species.
Perfect. The plan's also available on our website. I'd be happy to print a few additional copies if any of the Historic Review Board would like copies. But the plan also goes into much greater detail about the habitats and our strategic restoration actions that we're proposing at the site. Just a quick map, zooming in on the site planning area, showing the habitat areas in yellow, the prairie areas, and in orange, the oak savanna or oak woodland areas. Another component of the plan was recreation and access. The plan evaluated existing trails and use by the public. The plan had strategic actions developed to support a modest increase in use over the next five years. The public has been using the site from the time before Metro used it, and we are proposing these actions just to make the site a little bit safer and better for the public to access. Some of these actions include work on the trails, installing some new signage, mainly directional signage, so people know where they're walking at the site, constructing a bridge and boardwalk. We're also planning to construct an overlook and improving the existing maintenance and road driveways. The map here shows the trails and roads on the site and some of our plans for them. The solid lines are the trails, the dashed lines are the roads. So, for the trails, purple would designate trails that we would be decommissioning, and yellow designates trails that we would be improving or adding new trails. The dashed yellow is the new driveway extension we're proposing that would connect our existing access off of Highway 99 up into the Kenema area.
Where do you need a bridge? Is there like a ravine or something?
It's a small trail. I think I can point on it with the pointer. No, I can't. It's actually on the...
You can use the mouse.
Oh, there it is. There's a small bridge right in this area where a small creek comes down. And then we also have a small section of boardwalk in here where we have some kind of wet areas. I mean, it's a wet prairie out there, so we have wet areas in the winter that we want to get people elevated above so we can keep the habitat in good condition. So, next steps and projects in the plan, we identified some strategic restoration actions and projects to improve access. We are planning to construct about 300 feet of new driveway or road that would connect our existing driveway off of 99 up to the Kenema area. We're planning to do this work in June or July of this year. We are also planning to implement Phase Two of our oak habitat restoration project. This is to remove Douglas fir and other trees in the Oregon white oak woodland habitats. This is proposed for late this summer. We're looking at roughly 150 trees that would be removed from the site. There's also some trees that we would keep onsite as snags or as habitat as well. We're right now working on a plan to have as limited impact on the habitat as well as the cemetery road with that restoration project, and we're just still working on ideas on how we're gonna implement that project.
When you remove the Douglas firs, are you gonna be planting white oak, or will they naturally just spread?
We have a number of existing, I mean, probably have hundreds of Oregon white oak trees out there. What we will have, we do have is a number of small seedlings that may sprout on its own, but we won't be planting Oregon white oak necessarily. We may plant some of the herbaceous species like grass and the wildflowers, because that's one of our targets for that habitat type, is the herbaceous cover that would be associated with the oak trees. And that's part of the habitat that's important.
Just gonna clarify that if we were to leave all of the Douglas fir and some of the other trees that we're gonna remove, Oregon ash, eventually they get taller than the oak trees and shade them out. And oak trees do not tolerate shade. Shaded branch dies. And it, people sometimes struggle with, "What? You're taking out trees? I thought you were conservationists." But you take them out, then the oak trees thrive, and the habitat, which requires sun, does well, and the oak trees will take care of themselves if they're not aggressively shaded.
Did you find a value in that timber?
We're not gonna market it for value. We'd like to reuse it in other restoration projects. The resource of the trees are really valuable in stream restoration projects and would likely be utilizing any of the trees that leave the site in restoration projects, either on the Sandy or probably the Clackamas River.
Gotcha.
The other components of next steps is we'd like to do some of the site improvements, like the overlook and trail improvements, this coming fall and next summer. We'll probably be starting on developing more, develop plans for those projects this coming fall and moving into next summer to construct. Generally, Metro's processes go through a planning process, then we develop more refined details on the project, we secure permits if necessary, we have, hold neighborhood meetings or site walks, and then we start work. So, that's general Metro's process. Right now, we're in for the oak habitat project and the driveway extension. We're in developing the project so we can actually move forward and get permits if necessary.
Cool.
Probably most in interest to the Historic Review Board is, was in 2010, Metro conducted an archaeological investigation of the site that we owned at that point. We surveyed for prehistoric and historic archaeological sites. This included both pedestrian surveys and shovel probes. Then we documented the sites with SHPO. Metro has the archaeological report in hand, and we're using that as a tool as we move forward with project work to ensure that we don't have impacts to any of the identified cultural resources onsite. We did, in 2008 and during the site planning process in 2011, we did receive questions by a couple individuals about the historic nature of the cemetery road. And during the archaeological investigations in 2010, we did talk with our archaeologists a little bit about the road, and what we learned was is that the road was built to gain access to the cemetery. And we couldn't find a lot of, we couldn't find any documented records of it being the Oregon Trail or the road out of Oregon City to the south. What we do, what we have found is the 1850 or 1851 and 52 government land office surveys that show the road leaving Oregon City and basically traversing on the high bluff up above South End Road heading south. So, that's where the road as it was shown in 1850 in 1850 survey maps. And I brought the maps, if anybody would like to look at them after the meeting. So, moving forward with the project works, what we have, what we are doing is we're gonna be developing a monitoring and inadvertent discovery plan for the future projects. The plans will be in consultation with SHPO, and the tribes will look to them to, for feedback on the monitoring plan and inadvertent discovery plan before we move forward. We anticipate with the plan including ground surveys of any areas where we have work occurring after the work occurs, as well as archaeologists onsite, anywhere that we plan on doing ground disturbing activities.
Would you also be consulting with the Kenema Neighborhood Association?
Absolutely. When I showed the last project page, we're in the development as we would be holding neighborhood meetings. We would be also inviting other stakeholders. Last time we had neighborhood meetings, we invited most of the people that were on the rim looking down, and we also put the word out to the community of interested individuals. So, absolutely. And that pretty much wraps up the presentation, and we'd be happy to take some questions.
One question. I know in some previous conversations, you talked about, debating about taking out stumps or keeping stumps in and the archaeological ramifications. I don't know if you had determined what you were gonna do in regards to that.
We, with the oak restoration project, we'd like to create as minimal disturbance as possible. So, what we are looking at doing now is actually flush cutting the stumps on the ground, and then we will be hauling the logs out with a low ground impact, a ground pressure vehicle. We're looking into some specialized forwarding machines that have very little impacts, both on roads or when they go off-road off the site. So, we would be, for the stumps, we'd be flush cutting them.
I'll add, you know, that Phase One of this project happened several years ago, and while certain aspects of the project may not have been handled in an ideal fashion, you go out there now and the place looks amazing, and the proof of the, first, the wisdom of taking the action in the first place is expressed in the, how much healthier the habitat is and how beautiful the place looks and how it really reflects the biological history of the area with a more, a healthier oak woodland and prairie.
Wow. Well, thank you. So, you've got money budgeted over the next five years to implement various programs. You've got a master plan?
Absolutely.
And the money for it?
Yeah, we have money to implement the site improvements, and we had grant funding to finish the oak habitat restoration project that we started in 2008.
Gotcha. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for taking your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah.
And...
Appreciate it.
Jeremy McLaughlin, if I can just give a land use update in regards to this site and how it relates to any future historic review in 10 minutes?
Okay.
Actually, Brian, do you still have a, can you go back to the map showing a very small portion of this property is in the Kenema National Register District? It's a tiny portion that's next to the children's park?
Do this one right here?
Sure. If you wanna just, if you, up there, that's pretty much all that is next, that's actually in the National Register District, because at one point, there was a historic house that was on the site?
Yeah.
Two houses.
Two houses. And therefore, the district created the boundaries around existing houses.
What about the cemetery?
No. And so, the purview of the board, if there's ever any development in that little section that's actually meets the level of development for us, and we have a definition in our code, which is built, basically structured over 200 square feet, the board would be reviewing it. Or if it were a larger site plan, like a more intense development such as like the Kenema Park went through. But for the most part, the rest of the property is outside the purview of the Historic Review Board in 1740 overlay.
But there's not any vacant lots in that little square?
Well, it's just part of the open space.
It's part of the...
Yeah, yeah. It's existing tax lots, part of their open space. But there is a little notch of the open space that's in the district.
Gotcha.
But to this date, nothing intense has been proposed on those tax lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you mind leaving that map?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, if you wanna just keep the map up?
Oh, keep the map up.
That'd be great.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. At this point, we can have public comment on the Kenema Bluff's presentation. I'm gonna limit the public comment to 15 minutes. So, if someone wishes to speak or make comments, if you could make them brief and short, that would be appreciated.
Is it 10?
Yes. Yeah, this isn't a public hearing or anything like that. This is just, am I correct?
Work session. Yeah, it's a work session.
It's a work session, so...
Are you gonna leave the map up?
Yeah. That'd be helpful.
So, if you could state your name and your address, that would be great.
I'm Cap Hedges. My address is 11950 Southwest Breaman Avenue in Portland, and I'm a descendant, stakeholder descendant of Absalom Hedges, founder of Kenema.
David Hedges, 20750 South Sweetbryer Road in West Lynn. And being his brother, I too am a stakeholder. So, he's going to speak first.
Okay. Basically, there are two important elements here that we want to draw attention to. One is the commitment of Metro in most cases to preserve and restore resources, both historic and natural. And, you know, Brian referred to studies that were conducted, I think he mentioned 2008 or 2010. In fact, prior to purchasing the site, a study was conducted in 1996, and we have quotes from that study that clearly indicate the historic significance of the bluff and the importance of the resources and the natural resource to the habitat. So...
At the time.
And this was at the time, prior to their purchase. Then in 2007, I'm not sure exactly why, but Metro decided that that was the time they would move in and remove 200 trees from the historic site and bring in the heavy equipment. And, you know, at that time, they gave one week's notice to the Kenema Neighborhood Association, then moved in with heavy equipment. The equipment was already working when Paul called Dave and I, knowing how interested and how concerned we are about the bluff and the cemetery and the cemetery road. And that was when we became involved in that. Well, you know, because there was such little notice given to the community, there's quite an uproar, not just on our part, but on the community as a whole. And there was a meeting held at the fire department, and the head of the project, a gentleman by the name of Jim...
Desmond.
Desmond. Yeah, anyway, he addressed, well, he heard first the concerns of the citizens and stakeholders, and then he wrote a letter stating what Metro's commitment to the bluff and to the historic significance of the bluff would be. We have that letter documented, as we do quotes from the original study. And then the third element was in August of 2008, stories came out in the Oregonian regarding the archaeological significance of the Kenema Bluff.
Can I, can I stop here right now?
Yeah.
Can I ask how this pertains to what we talked about tonight? I guess I'm asking...
Our appeal is that you, that the Historic Review Board and the Planning Department and the City Council take under review our appeal that this whole project of reentering and removing trees and operating on the cemetery road be curtailed for further study. And my brother has documentation regarding the road that is also included in this.
That's what I was just trying to ask what you're...
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
So, I'm trying to be expeditious.
Should I pass this out at this time?
Yeah, if it's gonna be in the record, I'll need a copy.
Okay.
Let's see, maybe the last one's incomplete, so...
Oh, okay.
So, your concern is their further removal of trees and their impact on the bluff and from environmental and historical?
Well, there's environmental, I mean, a lot of the environmental damage has been done. In fact, it was described in the study before Metro even bought the property, that this was a very natural habitat with no, little to no invasive species, that it was a pristine habitat. And this, you know, this was a study conducted by Metro in 1996, and yet they saw fit 12 years later to march in there with chainsaws and tear out a big, good portion of the habitat.
Our concern mainly is the road. That's our focus, because...
Which road?
Kenema Cemetery Road. And Brian made some mention of that, but when we got into this, at first in 2008, I spoke with Jim Desmond on the road as the logging was underway, and I said that I could document the historical significance of the road. And he said, "The road has no historical significance." And I said, "Where did you get your information?" And he said, "From Scott Clemson, the president of the Kenema Cemetery Association." And he got it from his father, Howard Clemson, who handed down the cemetery association to him in 1997. But I have documented here, the cemetery road was a northern extension of the Klamath-Mollala Trail, which existed through archaeological records for at least 3,000 years. And this was the pathway that the tribes from Klamath, the Klamath area, and the Mollala Indians reached Willamette Falls for fishing and all the other purposes. And the historic, Oregon Historic Trails Fund has a website that, we've taken the map of the Klamath Trail, and so that's one of the attachments. But I want to quote from the website. "The first non-Aboriginal people to arrive in Oregon, explorers, trappers, traders, and immigrants, used trail networks established by Indians. Some Indian trails were developed into wagon roads and remain today as rural roads and even highways. Other Indian trails continue to exist as recreational hiking trails." And I have quotes from a couple of books about the trail that ran from Oregon City up through a rocky cleft that is now close to where 99 goes up the cliff, or goes up the hill, and that was later used by French-Canadian trappers and settlers. The, and this is a quote from a book, Willamette Landings, by Howard McKinley Corning. "To pass upstream on the east, the pioneers ox-drawn wagons mounted by a difficult winding way over the shoulder of the bluffs. By that route travelers reached the flat above the falls at the water's east edge, from whence they continued by river or by trail." And this is significant, ox-drawn wagons. This is, this was a pioneer trail, and Brian made reference to South End Road. South End Road was constructed in 1850, the same year the road was blasted at the river level. And at that same time, with the road open, stagecoach travel began between Oregon City and Salem. We're talking about pre-1850.
Okay, can I stop you right there?
Yes.
So, are you asking that no traffic go along cemetery road to do...
Oh, no, no.
Are there wagon wrecks there that need to be preserved?
There were.
But there aren't now.
There were wagon, you know, I was shown those by my father when I was a kid.
And are you asking that all the Douglas fir trees stay there?
The what?
All the Doug fir trees, are you asking that they stay there?
No.
Okay.
I have a, I can jump ahead here to the end of what I wanna say.
You'll have to. Let's get to the point of what you're asking, because I'm gonna catch up.
The, here is a point that is of utmost importance. When Metro went in, they, in 2008, and took out the 200 trees, they did so with the permission of the Kenema Cemetery Association, which did not follow the prescribed formula laid out in ORS 97440. And so, in essence, they broke the law. And so, one of the things we're asking is that any further non-cemetery use of the cemetery road conform to the law. We're not going to go back and say, "Oh, you broke the law," and try to stir up trouble. We simply believe that if the law is on the books, they should follow it. And in this light, we also have a request... And in this light, we also have a request that both Metro and the Kanema Cemetery Association, both of whom have denied the historical significance. With this evidence, admit, simply recognize the fact. That's one of our aims.
I'll tell you right now, everything you're saying sounds fantastic. It sounds like, you know, you've got a passion for it. Fortunately, what you're addressing is important, but if you're looking for an appeal or to do something like that, this board doesn't even have dentures in that regard. So, I mean, you'd really have to be looking at the City Council.
We understand that.
You know what I mean? So I see what you're saying. And if you think about what our impact is, our involvement in this is, as Christina says, is a small little square. What you're saying is, I have no doubt that these are historic things, but they're not recognized as such on a national level, on a historical level, so that we can't have any type of impact for a board for what you're asking for. I think you did start your conversation with going back to 2007 and '08 and the things that Metro did. So anything that you're doing is what I'm saying is, I totally respect and get what you're saying, but I think you've got to go beyond us with this. And that would be the City Council, or even, I would say, the City Council.
And that's why we...
We're just not somebody that has that kind of...
Well, we thought this was the beginning point.
Yes, we have a work session, that's what this is. It's not a public hearing of any type, and that's why I can only allow, you know, public comment for 15 minutes, because it's not a public hearing.
Right, right.
Well, through the Review Board and through Christina of Planning, this is our initiation of a procedure.
Yeah, and I guess my procedure would be...
And if you dig into this at all, you'll...
No, it's interesting, but I think going forward is your right way to go, and this is correct, the place to start.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good to meet you.
Yeah, thank you. Does anybody else want to make any comment in the next five minutes?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you want to come up and...
There's another person.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to probably limit your comments to a couple of minutes to allow one other person to talk.
Well, I'm here representing the Kanema Neighborhood Association.
If you can state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Paul Edgar. I'm the Land Use Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. And under that guidelines, I should be given the allotted time that an official of the Neighborhood Association is normally allotted.
Not necessarily, this isn't a public hearing.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm going to say is, respect that, and we respect you.
Okay. There's two things that I have here. One, I'm bringing a map from the Clackamas County website that reflects Oregon City in 1844, 1846. And this map was done by spies of the Hudson's Bay Company. These, this map, they infiltrated and were, this is before 5440 in fight, and they were trying to still lay claim to Oregon City. You'll see a trail coming out of Oregon City, going up, that trail goes right through the Kanema Bluff, goes right through this whole area, and it's the singular road out of Oregon City going south into the Willamette Valley. So when we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and thousands of wagons coming into Oregon City, they didn't stay in Oregon City, they went south. Where did, how did they go south? They went through Kanema, and they went along the Kanema Cemetery Road. This was the route. So I have back here other maps that I've done, and I've been doing research with LiDAR, with Oregon Department of Geology. This is the shelves and the areas, the clearings, all recognize where it is. The next thing that's important, we sent out and did a factual survey of the Kanema Neighborhood Association residents. We asked them to respond with a response to us. That response is represented in these pile of survey forms coming in, that we gave them envelopes, we stamped envelopes, and we asked them to send it back.
Did you, excuse me, did you explain to them about the fir trees and how they would, how they would impact the white oak that is the natural tree of there, before they filled this questionnaire?
Most of them have been at these meetings.
Do they understand what they're doing?
Yes, they do, absolutely. And they've been there, and they understand that they saw the tragedy of the initial grading of the historic wagon road by Metro without any preservation in mind, without any understanding whatsoever of the critical importance and the wagon ruts that were there.
They can't bring those back.
That was terrible.
You can't bring them back.
I know. And so, but what we have, we went to Jim Desmond, and he said, "I will protect that road. I won't allow that to ever happen again." Okay? That is their boss. Okay? What we're saying is, we don't want it to happen again either. We think what they did was a tragedy. And they did it because they don't understand historic preservation. That's our job. As the Land Use Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association, and a person living in an 1880 house, who restored it painstakingly with all of my heart and my blood, this, the family home, it's been in our family for 120 years under continuous ownership. We don't intend to sell it, we want to pass it on to the next generation. But Kanema is part of our family heritage, and we believe in these little narrow roads, and we believe in protecting the environment. And I'm out planting white oaks in my front yard, that I grew up myself in a sunlit area. But, and I try hard to protect everything with the environment and water. But what we're saying here is, there is extents to which you can go. And we, it's not about, much about how them cutting 150 white oaks. It's that, yeah, some can be cut, but we don't want that Kanema Cemetery Road in the environmental or the historical aspects of it impacted negatively.
Paul, thanks a lot. I totally get your passion. I feel it right through me, but I appreciate that.
Well, the road shows that it's, the map shows that it's real, and anybody that says it is not, they've paid for their consultant to say it.
Thank you. Anybody else? If you could state your name and your address, and I'll give you a couple of minutes.
Thanks for giving some time. My name is Michael Jones. I'm representing the Mount Hood Sacred Lands Preservation Alliance. I am speaking for tonight, not only myself, but Chief Johnny Jackson, who's the chief of the Cascade Tribe, Chief Wilbur Slakish, who's the chief of the Klickatet Cascade Tribe, and Carol Logan, who is Clackamas Kalapulua Chinook. Chief Johnny Jackson and Chief Wilbur Slakish are members of the Columbia River Intertribal Fish Commission. We heard about this a few hours ago, actually. They're on their way to Idaho for this, for a meeting, they can't be here. Carol Logan had jury duty, or else everyone would be here. But I'm here speaking on their behalf, as well as myself. Before Metro bought Kanema Bluffs, I went to them and warned them, there are cultural resources here. Development that was planned would destroy it. And we really wanted Metro to get their hands on this area. At the last hearing before the commissioners, Carol Logan, myself, another native was there, made a presentation. And it was really the first time that publicly anybody ever talked about the cultural resources of that area. When Metro came in and logged, Jim Desmond, I remember him saying, "Oh, I felt terrible." And people wanted to beat him up, they really did. Cultural sites, native cultural sites were there that both the chiefs had visited numerous times, because that's part of their heritage, places that Carol Logan went to, were impacted. Some were impacted because vegetation was removed, making them very vulnerable for vandalism. Chief Jackson and Slakish did the survey with us. They said it could have been worse. This was done out of ignorance. My idea was go in and do some replanning on the sites, and they said, "No, you'll call attention to it. Let's monitor and see what happens." The damage had been done, but things survived. At that meeting at the fire hall that's been mentioned earlier, I recommended that they undertake a cultural resource survey, following the guidelines of National Register Bulletin 38, which shows government agencies, it's mainly designed for, how to look at natural areas that have cultural sites, how you evaluate it. And it's a very intense survey, and it means you have to interview people, et cetera. They said they would look at that. We just learned that they did nothing but an archaeological survey. Archaeological surveys and cultural surveys are different things. Sometimes they overlap, generally, they do not. You do not see archaeological stuff generally and cultural stuff. Kanema Bluffs has and is a cultural and religious site. Now, we've been, I've been involved since 1979 on this stuff. Been very fortunate that I worked with members of the native communities, like Walter Spedes, who was a plant expert who gathered plants at Kanema Bluffs, Wilfred Yallop, who was a great cultural resource leader, who first introduced me to Kanema Bluffs. Chief Johnny Jackson, Chief Wilbur Slakish are their relatives. I'm thankful that Metro has done something, but I have to ask something. Why didn't you notify us? What is the reason not to notify us and get us involved in this process? We have great concerns. We are concerned that the, how unstable the bluffs are, which would and will impact cultural resources if things happen. It seems like the process is moving, well, in our standpoint, very, very fast. They have to get what they're calling stakeholders involved. We have stakeholders involved, from the very beginning, as a use of that area. I'm pleading with you, don't approve even a postage stamp size on this project until correct, more input can be given on the cultural resource value of this area. So it's not destroyed, not impacted.
I'm going to let you, it's not up to us to approve anything. This is just merely, we're part of the circle. It's just something that they need to do to present to us as a board, but we don't have any approval. But I appreciate what you're saying and where you're coming from.
And I do want to give...
Sure, yeah, we can put it in the record, but I...
Yes.
I totally hear everybody's passion on this. It's palpable. So I appreciate that, everybody's comments, and your stake in it. And I think, as I said, this is an information thing for the board. These kind of things, if there's any type of appeal or anything, like I said, it's going to go beyond our board.
Address?
Yeah.
Peel bucks.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Don't need that.
All right. So I appreciate it, thank you.
And one nice thing about today's technology, this meeting will be archived and streaming video, so people can come back and at a later date can listen, and this information will be put online.
And it could go forward to the council, things like, I mean, all that stuff. So, yeah, everything you said has great value, for sure. So I appreciate it. Yeah?
Is there, so, is there any formal action that the board can take?
No.
A letter or a recommendation or anything like that?
I don't think so. I mean, this is merely a presentation and a work session.
Yeah, you know, most likely, if this does get sent to the city commission, I'll write a staff background report with this information about the aspects of, you know, the authority of the historic review board. But, you know, if we could, just real briefly, I think if we could allow Metro to, I don't want to use the word rebuttal, because this isn't a...
Come back and say a comment.
At least give them a couple of comments.
Sure, I think that would be valid, because I've heard more of a passionate side, and I don't want to use that word, but maybe if one of you can come back up and just address those primary concerns that have been brought up in a couple of minutes, perhaps? I just saw a lot of shaking of the head, and I just...
There was a lot there added. We have actually engaged the neighbors and the local stakeholders, like Grand Ron Tribe and some of the other tribes. With our 2010 archaeological investigation, we did send copies to Grand Ron Tribe, the Salets, and Warm Springs Tribes. We received some comments back, and some of those things were incorporated into the plan. Because we don't have any federal funding tied to any of the projects, we didn't go through the higher-level archaeological investigations. In the future, we're very open to listening to the neighbors and any stakeholders that want to present information. We'd be happy to look and hear from them and work on that. I would like to add, one of the pieces with the project is, one of the things that we're looking at is working so we have little or no impact on the Cemetery Road, which seems to be the biggest concern here from a lot of the local neighbors.
Yeah.
And the only, last thing I'd add is, we didn't get a lot of opportunity to provide any information to the neighbors that were surveyed informally by the Neighborhood Association. We'd be really interested in hearing some of those results, and so we can actually help address some of those questions that they may have in the future. And I'd just like to reiterate, at this point, we're really at the, kind of, moving from the planning phase to developing the project phase. And so, once we have more concrete details about our project, we will be scheduling neighborhood meetings, and we'd be happy to invite any of the stakeholders that have interest in the project.
Go ahead. Before this meeting, were you familiar with the Mount Hood Sacred Lands Preservation Alliance?
I've heard of Michael Jones, and yes.
I ask only because, if you could be sure to take a copy of this, so you include them on your stakeholders list, it would probably help.
So, I kind of hear the varying points of view about what your impact is going to be on that area, given some dissatisfaction with previous impacts, right? So can you state to me that whatever you do, in terms of cutting trees and doing new pathways and whatnot, will not affect any of the possible archaeological or social-cultural remains or effects in that area?
Absolutely. I think that's our duty, the things that we know about at this point, we are not planning to impact those at all with any of the future projects.
So that would leave an opening for folks who are interested in those things, still have a native ground to work with, that you haven't disturbed or changed or messed with, I guess.
We can add a couple of things, one is which, we have the strong support of the Grand Ron Tribe.
Well, my question is, what we have support is whether you believe, you two believe that, in fact, whatever you do throughout these projects will not disturb what is there, so that those, that information can be gathered, that research can be done, and those folks can be satisfied that they have natural ground to work with.
Well, I think so. And I think that the work that we're doing is actually honoring the cultural and biological history of the site, and helping it become closer to what it was when it was a Native American managed area. And the kind of practice, you know, what you see, they're calling it a logging operation, which implies harvesting trees as part of a commercial profit-making operation. But in our view, we're doing, releasing oak trees from competition from admittedly native species, Douglas fir are clearly native, but in this context, the passage of time changes its habitat from what was once, and hopefully will always be, oak woodland and prairie complex, it would have, without our work, would have become a Douglas fir forest, very different from what it was for hundreds or thousands of years before 1850. from what it was for hundreds or thousands of years before 1850. And we try and do it, we do do it as sensitively as possible. It's a common practice in the Willamette Valley, entirely consistent with recommendations from all the best restoration ecologists, practitioners in the region. And we're going to great lengths to, and we were not around in 2008, but we're going to extraordinary lengths to engage the community. We didn't just start this a few weeks ago. We started this conversation more than a year ago to say, "We're developing this plan. These are some of the issues we're trying to address in the plan." We were very interested in continuing conversation with stakeholders about it, but we believe that what we're doing is a good thing for the cultural history of the site, not a desecration and not an outrage.
But it seems to me that what you have here is an issue of trust. More than 95% of what I heard tonight is around an issue of trust, whether you in fact will follow through on your plan and maintain the integrity of the spot. And so, it behooves you guys to do that job and do it right.
Well, I think also on top of that, that they have to, you have to instill some understanding in the community because it's clear by the first two questions on this sheet that they want to leave nature as it is, even though it really isn't what it should be. And they don't want you to cut and log any of the big fir trees, which, you know, is exactly what you're asking to do. So, those two things are gonna be monumental in their understanding of what you're doing.
With all due respect to the Neighborhood Association and whoever crafted the survey, public survey, you know, how you ask the question greatly affects the answer. And we're very, we are honestly very interested in continuing the conversation about what we're doing, how we're going to do it, why we would do it, under what circumstances would we not do it. And we had multiple neighborhood meetings. Brian's hosted multiple walks out on the site to show what, you know, our intentions.
We are not at all questioning your motives. You obviously are very passionate and very committed to what you do and it sounds like you do a really good job of it. And I'm glad we had this opportunity for everybody to come in at this stage in a preliminary manner, so you all know who each other are and you make sure everybody's included as we go forward.
And I just want to say, just for the sake of these four gentlemen that are here and their passion pleads, that there was mistakes made, perhaps, I don't know, back when this happened and that maybe there was more impact than there should be, that maybe that's something to learn from. And that was my other question, is, you know, to address a question of this all of a sudden is happening, you know, like that, that you have been planning and dealing with this for a year plus? Is that right?
Yes, yeah. We were having meetings last, last summer.
Okay. That's what I was asking. So that those concerns can be allayed, so, okay.
And one thing I'd like to say is that, before Metro purchased this, it's my understanding that a private developer owned this, a portion of this land and planned to subdivide it and make houses there. And so, regardless of what mistakes might have been made, I think a substantial effort to preserve what is there has been done and it's preserved as an open park and woodlands. Orks for Doug for, they're still there for the public. They're not filled with single-family residences, so I think that's a good thing.
I'll take an oak over a fir any day. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Our next thing is, okay, Ermatinger House update.
It was a very long report.
It was. Believe me, I've been blown away by the quality of work we're getting from ARG. It just makes me giddy inside. Very quickly, this is an update to the Ermatinger House process so far. I'm gonna utilize the PowerPoint presentation that...
Hey, fellas, if you could take it out in the hall, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm gonna utilize the PowerPoint presentation that Maya Fouda used. She presented to the city commission on May 8th and I did provide a link. You can listen to her whole presentation and details. I think it's fascinating. She, obviously, between her and Bill Hawkins and Mark Nielsen, Sigma Engineering, you can tell that they are passionate about this building. It's always lovely when you have a consultant that is passionate. In addition to getting paid, they're very passionate about what they're doing. So, real briefly, these are photos taken of the Ermatinger House. This is showing in its original location where the Elks Lodge is, so it'll be on what was Water Avenue. And so, you see at this time, there was, by 1890, the hip roof was there. It was only a flat roof for a very short time. And the front had shutters. This is showing...
Was somebody looking at us off that way, or did you...
Maybe it was Boo Radlin.
Probably. This was an interesting one. This one actually had never been identified before because it was a very large overview image, but Maya was able to get a pretty good scan.
Is that flat roof, the Ermatinger?
And that's the flat roof. So, this is a little bit of a conversation, oh, and across the, you're seeing Westland across the river with that two-story commercial.
Wow.
So, it's a little bit odd in the angle, but we see the flat roof and then take a look at the addition. This is one of the additions.
Ah.
Smaller than what exists today. And there's, the larger question that's gonna be worked on is this wall right here, this elevation wall, there's a question of, as the additions move on, is that's the original elevation wall from the main house? I'll put that issue aside because that's one of the discussions they're having. This is showing it in 1880s, different addition. You'll see that the pitch is different, it's wider and it's taller.
And it has a hip roof.
Oh, well, and now the main building has a hip roof, exactly. Same location. This is showing 1890 and it's right here with the hip roof.
Did they get flood damage during that, do you know?
Oh, yeah.
Everybody got flood damage.
That was before it was moved, right?
Yeah, so this is where it's, where the Elks building is right now.
So, when they moved it, I mean, I don't know the history, is that when they took the roof off and kept it flat?
No, I'll go on with that. And then, it was moved sometime around the turn of the century, I can't remember the specific date, 1900, 1910, to its second location, which was off of Center Street and...
11th.
11th. And it was on a, it was on a bit of a hill and so that's where you had the porch. And this is the key, the reason that Bill Hawkins found this interesting, is this is the addition, this plate looks like it's continuous. And so, that's why he was curious if this wall was from that very first addition. So, he's doing some more research on that and trying to tell the story of how those additions happened. Because we think we have three additions. The first small one, the second one, and then the one you see today with that, this is showing in its, where, in its location, in the second location on that bit of a pitch, 11th Street. You see the car driving down the hill? This is 11th. And this is today. So, when it was moved, that was when the hip roof was put down. And the beginning of the process of trying to do some restoration, the front porch was redone and windows were changed. If you look here, you'll notice different window configurations in this end and then this, this door was removed. And then this was a double window, these windows were different.
Are they considering putting the hip roof back on?
They should.
Well, I'm gonna continue with that. And this is just to remind everybody today, this is today's addition.
It's blocked for 10 years before they put the hip on.
Which they think is the third addition. But there's still the question of, is this wall right here still part of that original addition?
Is that a door to nowhere?
Yes, and that relates to how it was a little bit on the, the hill.
The hill.
So, if you, and the reason they know this, this is a third addition is that Bill Hawkins was doing understanding based on the proportions of the photos, that this roof pitch is different. And that's why it's kind of goes into the molding on the second floor differently.
Did you put the roof back? Saw a lot of problems.
So, in regards to the roof, the existing historic metal roof is actually still there. They just overframed it and they don't plan on changing it. They plan on keeping the overframing, fixing it. They have the structural engineer, and I'm not a structural engineer, so I'm not gonna get into it, but they believe they have a plan to fix some of the structural issues with the overframing and the weight. But they're just gonna keep the encapsulated metal roof, which does not work in the sense of keeping rain out, but is, it'll be basically kept pristine and inside.
Did they put a DPO or...
The portraits have some issues.
Sure.
And then the addition.
Nice.
The cracking in the foundation hasn't looked like it's gotten any bigger. I'm gonna go a little faster because some of the issues with the siding and then, let's see. I'm going to, oh, she just, one thing Maya did is she wanted to let, really the only existing windows that are original are the upper sash one and three on the front elevation and six, seven and eight.
So, when you say they're not original, does that mean just the not original glass or the frames as well?
No, those are the original sashes and glass, whereas everything else have been changed over time and some of them were done in the 80s, or, excuse me, in the 90s. So, just when we're looking to what was the original windows, we look at the photos and then they've best been able to discern these being original proportions, original sashes. They have, their recommendation, based on understanding about the previous fill on site, there was a police station house that was removed, just the hydrology of that lot and the water. Their recommendation is a full basement, but you wouldn't, it wouldn't, the height of the building wouldn't change, it would still have the same exposed two-foot. But what that gives it is additional room downstairs for storage and all the mechanical equipment can now be high and dry and inside a full basement. It takes out any of the potential hydrology and structured fill issues. So, they think the, a full basement will be really helpful for Ermatinger. And then, what they, the second thing in there, this is honestly history detectives and houses, I've never seen this level of detection work between Maya and Bill Hawkins. It's been fascinating to go in there and hear them just go off about what they found. And the hewn timber that you see in view A, the, what they found is, this is the original configuration. And then if you go into the dining room, you'll see it pops out farther than above. And so, at some point, and what they, this is what they can't figure out, was when that pop-out happened because they're doing more research on that, I don't want to speculate, but they're trying, because the foundation beams are the same age all the way around, but they haven't gotten into, they haven't gotten in to understand this area yet. So, they're doing some more investigation. They were hoping when they would take off the wallpaper, that they would get a better understanding of, was this exposed paneling or not? McLaughlin House had areas of exposed. And what they found out was each room honestly had a different configuration of the inside wood. And they don't have a theory out of where, what, what was wallpapered? Was anything wallpapered? Was this salvaged? We've heard from letters that this was a cheaply made house, with something, where things repurposed. So, that's kind of the discussion that, in the research they're doing. They're also potentially doing an additional scope of work for some paint analysis, to look at all the different paint and some wallpaper analysis. They found like little pieces of wallpaper kind of stuck in areas when they're doing some of their investigations. So, this is just looking at different types of B-board and panels. Let's see, the addition has, you know, 1920s Wayne Scotting, so they're trying to do a little more research about that story. What they've really found out, and this is what they, this is their conjecture and they like to do more research, is they think, based on understanding the framing, that the staircase was flipped. So, it was originally an enclosed staircase that was flipped on the other direction, so you'd walk down the hall, turn around and go up the stairs. It would be closed and there are some reasons for that, heating. It would have an exposed two-story volume, probably you didn't have that in 1840, apparently the Barclay House has that. And they're doing more research on Jason Lee's house down in Salem, it's the same territorial age. But that also explains some of the structural issues and being not, not a structural engineer, I don't want to get into the very specifics, but looking, they can basically see where a beams that should have spanned the space were cut and it doesn't make sense. So, they're doing more research to see if this conjecture plays out. And if it does, this is the discussion they have with the city commission, that they're gonna get back to them. Putting the staircase back to its original location, if they can do more research and find out, would also help solve some of the structural issues on itself, rather than coming up with kind of a fix and keeping it in the stairs in the same location. Because pretty much right now, this area up here is resting on that wall and that's it. Yeah.
That's not one of the one-inch walls, is it?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's resting on air.
Okay.
And so, let's see, oh, the second floor, I don't think, everything more this, they're doing more, once again, they're kind of the addition and the staircase are the two extra resources that they've, because they've found this information, they're trying to figure out, because depending on what they decided, it's gonna change how the final plans are. And, let's see, I don't remember all of the presentation, so you definitely can go back and listen to Maya talk in exhaustion. She, they also did an inventory of hardware. A lot of the hardware is 1880s and she actually found this from, she's working on Union Station. And this is the same hardware as Union Station. And so, that was old for Union Station and this is new for Ermatinger. But there's historic and reproduction, so you look, these are some of the original hardwares. And the doors are kind of all different ages. Looking at some of that period addition and then looking at, they don't know if it's original, but it's definitely older. And then you can do it from hinge, hinge analysis. So, the fancier is definitely newer.
So, that's how she could tell whether the doors are original or not?
That adds to the piece. So, what, this was their first and what you saw was her report and then her proposed plans and she had four different ADA configurations in the packet for the plans. And that's just a kind of preliminary conversations about which makes the most sense, understanding that that's probably gonna be the ADA upgrade, will be an ADA ramp on this. Obviously, a house museum is not gonna trigger an elevator. And just working...
Is it gonna be in the front of the house?
Well, there's the four options and I can bring it up. The, and that is something that we, when we get closer to figuring out what the plans are, then they might bring them back in a more formal manner from the historic review board. The, what with these preliminary, the, if you actually open yourselves up to the plans, the second set, second link in your project, towards the end of the set, you'll see the four plans. And it shows kind of one going through the addition on one side, one going through the rear porch, one looking at the option of a front approach. And that's actually, the National Park Service asked them to look at that because their universal access requirements for park service and removing barriers is a high priority and they want to see front entrance approach if they can. So, that is definitely in there to look at, especially if this one day may be acquired by the park service, we want to research that.
I can't open anything.
And I'm gonna see if I can find. The, they're gonna be coming, they're actually asking currently for some additional services such as the additional investigation on the rear addition and the staircase, as well as the paint and wallpaper analysis to help kind of tease the story a little bit, because these are some conjectures, but to get from conjecture to a plan set, additional information has to happen. And the city commission heard their presentation and basically said, "Move forward and continue investigating and come back to us when you've heard more." The one question about, with this addition is, if you bring it back to what it originally was, it makes it more proportional, this is federal style, very proportional, and this addition is very not proportional. You could say you would be losing the upstairs attic space, but that you could be getting that back from the full basement. So, there, you know, the question is, what, what do we want at the end of the day of the Ermatinger House? It's gonna be a house museum, what, what's our story for it? You know, the first phase worked on restoration, are we going to bring it back to 1844 and do as more restoration, get it closer? Are we keeping additions that are older than 50 years, but may don't really tell the Ermatinger story? So, those are some of the larger questions that they're kind of wrestling with and I don't think that, that can be answered. that, that can be answered yet until more research is done. But there will be some questions about what do we want to do with the addition. There also, with this project, we have obtained our Community Development Block grant money. We have money identified from the City Commission, but as we move forward to look for larger grants, what's our story? How are we promoting this? What's our final product? How do we sell this to people who may not be as passionate about preservation? And that's something they're looking at. And, you know, is a, I don't want to say full restoration, but moving closer to restoration, which is generally not as much of a preservation path that we go down as much. Usually, we like to keep what's existing, and then we, we change and make sure what we change is still compatible. But is that kind of the hook that's going to help us? So, these are all things that we can wrestle with later, because they're still researching, but that's what they wanted to bring up, the things they found in their initial research.
Could you talk about the money aspect a little bit more? I remember from re-perusing through this, that the total cost was five or $600,000. And could you tell us how much money the city's committed, what the block grant is, how far that's going to take us, when we're going to have to look for more money?
Yeah.
All that.
And I'm going to give you ranges, because I don't, in my head, don't have the specific numbers. But what that was, that was kind of more of the shell and core, maybe not the full mechanical. So, that 600 may be more towards 800 when we're done. And that does not include the work that's been done so far with the architect engineering fees, which were 60,000, which will, you know, when they're done with everything. So, we have, I believe, 100,000 by the city, and we have $20,000 Preserve Oregon Grant, which we have to use as next winter on hard costs, which we just have to figure out what hard costs we can spend on this next winter, because we can. And then, we just received, I believe, $140,000 from Community Development Block Grants. So, we'll be looking at, this is in the Urban renewal district, the Urban renewal said this last year, this is not the time. And they did not extend any money, but they said, talk to us later. It's still potentially an option as we move farther down. The City Commission has identified, you know, identified potential future general fund, but that's not going to get the whole project. So, we're looking at Meyer Memorial Trust, Collins Foundation, that's kind of the next $200,000 to $300,000 that'll kind of seal the deal.
So, I'm not clear about the 60,000 that the city's committed to for...
That was a previous years...
So, that's not included in the 100 from the city budget?
Correct.
That's over and above?
That was from this last fiscal year.
And so, the money that we have now will take us at least through making sure that it's a tight box?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, right now, it's structured, it's, we've put in structural stabilizers, and it's not falling down. The question is, can, and this is what they might be able to answer, Maya Fode and, and ARG is, do we phase this? Can this be phased out? Can we do, you know, can we do the basement and chunk it and get that Phase 1 done, and kind of mothball it? Is this something where we just, it's too integrated, and we're going to have to, you know, pretty much do this all as one project? That's, we're still not quite there yet with them, trying to give us the best direction and next steps forward.
Yeah, they could easily dig that basement, pour the foundation, set it down, and sit it for a while.
That, that is on the table of a, of an option. That, that would be eligible for the Preserve Oregon Grant, because that's a hard cost for the stabilization.
Yeah.
So, right now, there is an option for an exterior staircase dam. There would be no window wells, but there is, code does not require in it, but there is, they're looking at kind of an option A and B, is, is there a way to put stairs down to the basement for an exterior stair, you know, concrete stairs or not? So, that's in one, that'll be an option in one of the final programs.
Okay.
So, that's all I have. Just wanted to give an update. The preservation survey was approved by the City Commission at the last meeting last week, and so, it was approved by resolution. So, we now have the full support of the City Commission for that. And I'll be working with GIS this summer to put together a pretty neat GIS app, really, that will allow in the future you to click on any survey form that we have for all the surveys on a GIS map. So, you can take a look at a map, you'll see a dot for an address, click on it, and the survey will look up.
That's cool.
And any other information. We could have multiple PDF informations. So, we should have a pretty neat interactive map for all the surveys. That would be, so, we love our GIS, and we couldn't do anything without them.
Do you have anything for next month?
I don't, I have some people that have talked to me, but we're running out of time for them to turn information in. So, if I don't get something within the next couple days, it will likely be...
Right, well, by Friday, if you don't get anything, then...
Yeah.
So, is there money left in the window repair budget?
Yes, we have $2,000 left.
And it has to be approved and spent by when?
Ideally, it needs to be approved and spent by June 30th. I can talk to our Community Development Director if there's a way to have it go over.
The other thing is, I don't know if we can, I don't remember the rules, but if there is money and nobody's coming in, that can we go back to some previous people and just say, I think we talked about that, there's money left, let's see if you're interested?
Yeah, and there's a gentleman who's working on the Mediterranean Revival Stucco duplex.
Which, over...
That was approved by the board.
Oh, yeah, with Todd.
And he's promised me he was going to come in. So, he has a lot of projects that are eligible, so...
They're coming quick.
Hopefully. I've given him all the dates and all the packets, so...
Okay. All right, well, let's close this. Thank you for everything, and we'll shutter down.
I can sell about this.
Oh, yeah, I will.